Good evening and welcome to the November 30th, 2022 special meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast, and I would ask that at this time, anyone in the audience recording this meeting identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent Councilor Squawea, could you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Squawea.
Present.
Counselor Beaunhassing.
Here.
President Zarela.
Here.
Counselor Bozeman.
Present.
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor Craigens not with us. Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Counselor DiNatali.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green is not with us, and Counselor Schultz is not with us.
Counselor Schultz is not with us.
So we have eight members this evening.
Thank you very much. The public had been advised to contact the Clerk's office regarding any comments of no more than two minutes. None were brought to our attention, and I see that there is no one in the audience seeking to make public comment. So, that being said, I will now read the warrant for the special meeting. This is November 14th, 2022, warrant for a special meeting of the City Council. A special meeting of the City Council will be held on Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, immediately following the Finance Committee meeting, which is scheduled to begin at 6:00 PM, to be held in the Legislative Building, 700 Main Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. 01420. The agenda will consist of the following. Hearing: Classification and taxation of property according to use in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 797 of the Acts of 1979, as amended by Chapter 79 of the Acts of 1983, per order of myself, City Council President. I now declare the hearing open. And you two may proceed when ready. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, President Zarela, members of the City Council. My name is Chris Pocchet, and I'm the chief assessor for the city. I'd like to thank you all for taking time this evening to help determine the FY23 tax rate for the city of Pittsburgh. I'd like to start by thanking the members of the Assessor's Office: Jerry Millet, Kelly Arsno, Ryan Bouvet, who's sitting to my right this evening, Tom Capooty, for their hard work and dedication to making the office run as smooth as we transition back to a more normal work year. It's through their hard work that I sit before you this evening to discuss this year's tax rate classification. Fiscal year 23 has had its share of challenges, but we were able to make tremendous progress towards meeting or exceeding Department of Revenue guidelines for our upcoming fiscal year 2025 major certification target date. Transitioning to a new office model allowed our office to review all our data as if it were a full revaluation year and make more thorough adjustments to many of the areas of our assessment data. Ryan has been spearheading several projects that improve both assessment data and billing efficiencies. We've also seen a transition to a new personal property software and data collection vendor, RRC Incorporated, to assist in capturing lost revenues through improved listings of personal property. This has enabled us to be proactive in reestablishing baseline values as well as conducting future needs assessments before they become unforeseen issues. This year, I'm happy to report the following. Final valuation approval from the Department of Revenue took place on November 7th with a final taxable value of just over $3.92 billion, the highest assessed value in the city's history, and an increase over last year's highest historic assessed value of nearly $500 million. The Department of Revenue also approved new growth on the same day. The new growth for fiscal year 23 was $1,094,549 tax dollars. The growth was led by the continued uptick in new higher-end home construction. There were 23 permits issued in 2021, and residential growth was over 30%. Commercial and industrial growth was at 22%, and personal property was 48% due to the new vendor. The new vendor. Brief revaluation statistics for this year: In the interim year valuations, the board analyzed all sales transactions for calendar year 2021 for our fiscal year 23 values. There were 331 qualified single-family arms-length sales with a median sale price of $296,000. There were 601 sales of greater than $1,000, according to the Warren Group. Both confirm the residential properties' values have increased a robust 17% for single-family homes and upwards of 20% for two- and three-family homes. Commercial and industrial property increased 8.8% and 5.62% respectively, and personal property showed an increase of 3.1%. The fiscal year 23 highlights if there's a single tax rate approved this evening, it would be the lowest single tax rate in the city since fiscal year 2010. A single rate of $1,602, which is what we've calculated, would be a reduction of $1.59 per thousand in assessed value. It would result in the average fourth lowest tax bill of surrounding communities, and the average single-family tax increase would be 6%, which is slightly below or well below some of the surrounding communities that we're seeing getting certified in the last several days and weeks. The analysis looking forward of the data for what will be fiscal '24's calendar fiscal '22 sales show an increase in a number of properties' transaction through July and a slowdown since interest rates began to increase. The preliminary analysis makes it difficult to predict next year's increased estimate in single-family homes. However, year-to-date, according to Warren Group and our internal analysis, it's hovering around a 10% increase for the upcoming year. Our goals moving forward would be to continue to work towards the fiscal year '25 revaluation and continue to rework our valuations to continue to fall in line with the state standards. Our office is now focused on increasing our personal property tax base, improving our data quality through field review, and implementation of new technologies to increase our overall efficiencies and improve customer service. At this time, I'd like to thank you all once again, and I'll take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Questions from council? I will mention, before I call on anyone, that we need to limit our questions only to either clarifications of what has been presented to us or questions specifically about the tax classification vote we will be taking tonight. General issues of budget and revenue are for budget season. That said, councilors? So far, I'm not seeing anyone.
Oh, Mr. President, let me ask you a question then. On page 55, I think we talked about this, the...
You have the floor, Counselor.
Huh? Yeah, page 55, my favorite subject. Taxes and property. I talk about it every year for the last eight years. And the university is assessed for $195,132.6, and if you figure it out, it comes to about $3.5 million. I maintain, as a City Councilor, and us, representing the people of Pittsburgh, and the mayor, should be working towards, what do you call that?
So, Counselor, that is very much not on our agenda this evening. There is, it has nothing to do with either the Assessor's Office policy or with the vote that we need to take this eve...
I understand that, sir, but in lieu of taxes...
Counselor, Counselor, it's not that it's not a valid point for you to be concerned about, it's that this is not the place to discuss it at the moment. I would encourage you to contact the Assessor's Office or the Mayor's Office with regard to policy outside of the...
I have talked to the Assessor's Office today.
And that's fine, Counselor. I'm just telling you, this is not a topic, whether or not the university pays taxes is not a topic that is on the agenda this evening.
I understand, as, but in lieu of taxes, we should be going after them so we can get students to go there for free.
Counselor, Counselor, what the university pays, let me rephrase. What the university pays or does not pay to the city in any capacity is not on the agenda this evening. It can be discussed at another time when it is on the agenda or outside of council. But I don't want, especially because the university itself has no idea that they're on the chopping block tonight, it really would not be appropriate for us to get into that at this time. Do you have any questions that pertain specifically to either your understanding of the presentation that was made or the question of whether we should implement a tax shift tonight?
My question to him, since I've read the book, I'm going by what I read in the book.
Counselor, by that logic, we could review the entire city budget tonight. We're not doing that. So, let's just go by what has been presented in council here or what we are actually voting on. There will be opportunities for you to ask any of those other questions, either in session or out of it, but tonight is not one of them.
My fellow chair over there wants to talk first. I'll yield the floor for now.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. Many times over, I get asked by constituents, you know, what are we doing tonight in this meeting? And tax classification hearings that we have this evening are primarily to discuss how we want to divide up the property tax bill amongst the four classes of property valuation that make up our tax base. That's residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. The question of whether taxes go up or down gets decided during the budget process. What we're here to determine tonight is what class is paying what of that adjustment. And as I know from personal experience, beginning in about 2012, the City Council steadfastly and aggressively, and in some cases courageously, kept on a track to get this city to a single tax rate, which is 100% shift, which is basically no shift. Single tax rate simply means that we are charging the same rate per $1,000 valuation across all four classes. Every class is paying the same rate. A dual tax rate would mean that we are shifting more of the tax burden disproportionately to the industrial, commercial, and personal property sector and away from the residential sector. So, the way a single tax rate would work this evening is 80% of the tax base are in valuations tied to homes. 20% is in the other three classes. So conceivably, any tax levy we levy on the public, which is over $65 million, 80% of that number is paid by the residents, and 20% is paid by the other three classes. That's why many experts say that a single tax rate is fair and equitable, because if you own 80% of the base, you pay 80% of the levy, and if you own 20% of the base, you pay 20% of the levy. There are very few communities in the Commonwealth, certainly in Worcester County, that have a dual tax rate still. Worcester, I think, is principally the main one that still has one. In fact, they had their meeting last night to do their tax classification. My advocacy this evening is what it's been for the last 12 years, that the fact that this city reached a single tax rate in FY2020 was a huge milestone, and I would hope that my colleagues would vote this evening to maintain that at a single tax rate. And my reasons are the following. The benefits of a single tax rate in our community yield lower commercial-industrial property tax rates for this city as opposed to a dual tax rate policy. It makes the city more competitive in attracting and retaining commercial-industrial investment and ownership. It sends a marketing message to the commercial-industrial investment and ownership communities that the city believes in a tax policy that is both fair and equitable in relation to market valuation makeup of its tax base. Pittsburgh is now among 90% plus communities in the county that have a single tax rate. Less than 10% have a dual tax rate. More and more communities would like to go to a single tax rate, Worcester being one of them. They were wrestling very difficult last night with trying to get close to it, but they're way too far away from it right now. After three years of having a single tax rate policy, Pittsburgh's average annual single-family home property tax bill of $4,744 ranks in the bottom half of communities in Worcester County and is well below the state average. From FY16 through FY19, while having a dual tax rate policy, the average single-family home property tax increase annually was $333. From FY20 through FY23, if we keep the single tax rate policy this evening, the average single-family home property tax increase annually has only been $183 compared to the $332 when we had the dual. So it's almost half what it was. That's been the historical average. The city of Worcester last night just voted on its tax rates, and they kept the dual tax rate structure. They're charging their commercial-industrial sector $31.26 per thousand. When you compare that to the city of Pittsburgh at $16.02 if we keep the single rate, we're about half of the rate of Worcester. And why do I point that out? Because a single tax rate signals to the investment community that we are fair and equitable in our assessment of who pays what in taxes. We don't leave out the residents in this discussion. The residents are paramount in this discussion of maintaining a single rate policy, because what happens if we go back to a dual or we impose a dual rate like Worcester did, where the gap is insurmountable? Residents were at $14, businesses were at 31. What happens is, is that businesses will be incentivized to not want to do investment here, whether it's redevelopment, new development, and specifically our small and medium businesses, it'll be hard for them to want to stay if there are other communities that charge lower rates. Why is this subject particularly important to Pittsburgh? Because we have that albatross known as Unitil, that's killing our residents, killing our businesses' finances. A lot of these communities don't have the benefit of having Unitil. I'm being sarcastic when I say benefit. So tonight's decision is even more important for all classes. Since we can't control what Unitil does, we can't control what we do from a property taxation perspective, and by maintaining a single rate, we are continuing to signal to outside investors who want to bring a business here, who want to develop here, who want to redevelop here, that we're a better choice than communities like Worcester because we charge far less. And that benefits the residents, because the more we bring in on that side of the class, the less they're responsible for. There is no benefit to the resident in a dual-rate structure. They may think that they're getting a lower tax increase, but what they're really, what we're really doing is incentivizing less commercial-industrial investment, which therefore leads to residents having to pick up what's lost. So the residents are going to get hit, whether it's a single or a dual tax rate, for the simple reason they make up 80% of the base. That's the key metric. It's not because we're imposing it more on them than others, they make up 80%. And the last point I'll make on the information we received, what was striking to me was single-family homes or residential valuations in general rose by 17% in one year. That is the highest single-year increase in at least the last, as far back as I've gone, 2016, so eight years. Last year was the second highest at 11.9. This is the highest single year of valuation growth in residential properties in at least the last decade. Why is that important to point out to the public? Because when your residential valuation goes up by 17% and your commercial, industrial, and personal property valuations only increase by a fraction of that. In our case, residential valuations rose by more than twice what commercial did, they rose by more than three times what industrial did, and they rose by more than five times what personal property did. These are gaps that are unheard of in our city in the last 10 years, and it's throughout the Commonwealth in the country, mind you. But the reason why this year's particularly enlightening is the rate of valuation growth on the residential side is exponentially higher than the commercial-industrial and personal property, even more so this year, highest we've ever seen. So naturally, the tax levy burden falls more on them, because not only do they make up 80% of the base, but the valuations grew by two, three, and five times greater than what the other classes did. And the city has no control over that. That is real estate, state and federal market rate forces at work here. So it's just a matter of what our tax base consists of and the valuation growth. And the residential valuation growth is skyrocketing by leaps and bounds. Where there's parity in the increase in your tax bill is if the commercial, industrial, and personal property valuations rise at a rate somewhat similar to the housing. That's not the case. Housing is here, and everybody else is right here, all market-driven. So, I could talk for three hours on this subject. I always joke every year, gentlemen, that we could hold a seminar once a month for the public interested to explain this booklet. It is not an easy booklet to follow, because there's so much math, there's so many numbers, there's so many moving parts that go into, when you take the bill out of your mailbox and open it and see a number, you go, how do they come up with this number? It's a very complex set of calculations, and there's a lot of moving parts that go into what that number says. But I wanted to just stress at the end, as I conclude here, I always encourage my constituents to read this document. It is one of the most important documents outside of our budget itself. This tells us the vitality and the economic prospects this city has. Our tax base is the highest it's ever been. Our average single-family homeowner tax bill at $4,744 is in the bottom 30% of the county, and it is well below the state average of, I think it's $6,600. So what that means is, whatever you think of these numbers, more than 70% of the rest of the Commonwealth pay a lot higher taxes than our residents do. Granted, our residents aren't as prosperous in many respects as many other communities, but the point is, is we remain in an affordable community to live in. And because of the Unitil albatross, it is even more paramount on this City Council to have a tax rate policy that signals to the investment community on the commercial-industrial sector, we want you here, because we know we can't control utility rates, but we can control property tax rates. And that's why we want you to come here, because we have some of the lowest property tax rates in the state. And that thereby helps the residents on their side, because the more we bring those classes in, the less they got to pay. So all a dual tax rate will do is hurt residents. That's all it's going to do. And I cited that statistic earlier that I don't think everybody's aware of. When we had a dual tax rate, the average single-family home tax bill increase was $333 a year. In the four years we've had a single rate, it's been 180. So, no one wants to see an increase, period. I get that. But as was said earlier by the assessors too, the increase we're experiencing is exponentially smaller than many other communities are experiencing. I'll use Worcester as one example. The average single-family homeowner bill in Worcester, which is not a prosperous community either, is going up by $440 this year, for the year. Ours is about 50% that, about half. So while we maintain a rate that is way below those communities for investment in industrial and commercial growth, a residential increase is a lot smaller than many other communities are experiencing. And the reason there's an increase at all is two factors. The property tax levy going up in the budget to balance it, and the valuation growth being exponentially higher than everybody else, all the other classes. It's not a matter this evening of the council going, you know what, our residents are flush with cash, they can afford anything we throw at them, they have plenty of money to burn, so let's hit them with an increase. That's not how this works. It's purely based on valuations and the levy that's levied. And I know the President said that we're not going to get into budgetary matters tonight, and I won't, but when that tax levy is increased, we gained $1.5 million in added revenue. There is a reason why we have to do that. And for anyone who says we should not do that, you ask them, well, what are you going to do to prevent that $1.005 from being necessary? And I guarantee you, you'll get no answer, because they don't have an answer, because there is no answer, other than we have no choice. And I can read a list of nine items that are necessary for that increase in the levy that not a single person in this room will touch, because you really can't. It's contractual. But that's why the bill goes up. The levy goes up to balance the budget, coupled with the valuation growth. And the valuation growth is so exponentially higher than the other classes, of which we don't control, that's why it falls on this. But to put it in the full context, compared to how other communities are doing, we're doing pretty damn well. And this remains an affordable community to live in. And one piece of information I want to point to in this booklet is page 10, the top chart. Why is this chart very important as well? This chart represents your overall effective tax rate. If everybody looks at 2017, 2016, 2017, look where we were. You don't want that blue row, which is your tax rate, to touch that pink row, which is your levy ceiling, or that's catastrophic. DEFCON 5 for us. Why is it DEFCON 5? Because we will be unable to raise taxes to balance a budget that is 94% nondiscretionary. No one wants to do it. It has to be done, unless people have $1.005 in cuts to present, which they don't. But this chart is very important for people to digest, because where we were seven years ago, we were near hitting that ceiling. And now look where we've gone, opposite direction. You want that gap between the pink and the blue to be as far away as possible. And the fact that we continue to trend in the right direction gives me a lot of, allows me to sleep better at night, because where we were seven years ago, we were getting dangerously close to that ceiling. And if we hit that ceiling, it would have meant $1.5 to $2 million in budgetary cuts to a nondiscretionary budget, which means a lot of things people want and need in our city would not happen. So this booklet is very encouraging, very good read for people to see. I'll post it on my pages, I'll share the links. But I just wanted to explain to people tonight, you know, what we're talking about here tonight. We're talking about how we shift the tax levy across the classes. And what I hope this council does tonight is we stick with what we've been doing the last three years and what more than 90% of the county does, and that is make it fair and equitable, everybody pays the same rate, there's no inequity in who pays what, because all that'll do, that inequity, will hurt the residents. It will hurt the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. If Counselor Beaunhassing is willing, thank you. I just would like to make a couple points before I go to him. One is, I just want to highlight one particular remark that Counselor DiNatali made and put it in a slightly different context. We've had the highest valuation increase in quite some time. Our average year-over-year residential tax increase is still falling compared to last year and to... year and to most previous years. I think we had a larger dip in the middle there somewhere. But the point is, even with that massive increase in your homes' valuations, in my home's valuation, in all of that, the average actual tax increase that residents are going to see is still low. You would expect that with that kind of valuation jump, you'd be seeing a big jump on your tax bill, too. The fact that that's not happening, again, I'm not a finance guy, so I don't know exactly what we've done to keep that from happening, but it's a testament to the fact that we are doing what we can to keep the tax bill low. Or that we're making good decisions that enable us to lock in a levy, a total levy that keeps that bill low. Also, I want, I can't, it can't be stated enough that we are looking at an 80-20 split here in terms of residential versus everything else. And I think one key number that we need to look at is on page 7. The second-to-last column on page 7 is labeled "tax dollars shifted." If we were to go, now, the total residential levy currently, if we do zero shift, it says here, the total residential levy would be approximately 50 million, 50 million and a half. If we were to go all the way to a 50% shift, a 150% shift, which would be absurd and disastrous, but even if we went all the way there, the residential, the total residential levy would only drop to 44.5. That means, now, I can't put that in terms of what that would mean for the average tax bill, but the point is, because our commercial, industrial, and personal property sector is so small compared to the total residential sector, the actual, even in a short-term sense, even disregarding consequences, the total savings to the residents from dumping an immense burden on the business community would be very small, especially if we look at only more reasonable shifts that we could even theoretically consider, like, say, 5%. We'd be saving all residents across the, oh, go ahead. Am I saying it wrong?
No, you're perfect. But to your point, you didn't, you said you didn't know how much money the residents sent? Page 18 shows you the breakdown of the tax dollars saved or accrued based on your point you're making here.
So on page 18, it looks like, yeah, if, even if we went for a full 50% shift, which would be ridiculous for so many reasons, the average homeowner would see a decrease in, of $300, which is certainly not trivial. But given what a drastic, drastic change we'd have to make to get to that, there's no way it would be worth it. If we did a 5% shift, the, if I'm doing my math correctly, the average decrease, it wouldn't even be a decrease from last year, but the average decrease from the 100% to the 105% on your tax bill this year, if you are the average single-family homeowner, you would, your increase would be lessened by, looks like roughly $45? That's, again, yeah, $45 is $45, but is that really, if you're the average single-family homeowner, that's not making or breaking your budget, $45. And so to follow up on what I, what I hope everyone here agrees on is, the only way to really reduce that burden on the residents is to increase the share of commercial, industrial, and personal property that we have in the city. Every new business we bring in, every new factory, every new whatever else, you know, everything that isn't a residence that we bring into the city means that that 80% goes down a little. And overall, that's going to make more of an impact on your tax bill than any shift that we could do, even, again, even before considering downstream consequences like driving businesses to Lemonster or, you know, causing small businesses to have a harder time getting started and so on. So it is my fervent hope that we will have a unanimous vote for 100% factor, no shift, a single tax rate. That being said, thank you for your patience, Counselor. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, Mr. Pickett, you mentioned some of these factors, but I think there's some really encouraging news in these figures. And I think, first off, I see our, our room tax revenue has been restored after disappearing during the pandemic. We've collected almost $1.2 million in room tax revenue from Great Wolf Lodge, which is, is great because that was a big hole in our budget we had to fill during the pandemic.
It was a tremendously large hole, and that would, you know, that's something that Calvin Brooks, the auditor, deals with more than me as far as the room tax. But we've, Ryan, myself, and Tom Kapuley, within the last few months, did a full re-inspection of Great Wolf Lodge, and they are, they don't have enough rooms. So, I mean, they're in the process of, it's, it's very encouraging for us as far as room tax. You know, we expect to see that number to go higher. So, I mean, it's.
And I think I see, in addition to that room tax revenue, they're also our largest taxpayer in the city. They pay, is it $450,000 a year?
As far as largest real estate?
Yes.
Yes. And the thing with, with Great Wolf is they're under a TIF. So right now, it's assessed at 50% of its value, but it's expected to go up considerably in 2025 when the TIF readjusts itself. So right now, we're, you know, we're working with them to see, you know, how much of a value we can put on it. And they're great neighbors. And then, as I said, you know, a large amount of our growth in the next coming years is gonna be looking towards picking up personal property at Great Wolf, which is also exempted under the previous TIF, as well as, you know, the value of the property itself. They went up about $2 million this year just because of market, you know, market adjustments, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, the more growth that we can stimulate in the city in areas that aren't homes, that aren't residential, it lessens the tax burden on residents who live in the city. And I think that's great that this is gonna be even, Great Wolf is gonna be even a larger source of revenue for the city because I think they're a great employer. I think they're a great attraction for the city, and now they're, they're really, they're paying a lot in property taxes to help fund our, our operations. And you mentioned the, the growth in property tax. I think it's important to point out that while 80% of our property tax revenue may be resident, from residential sources, in the growth, less than 30% is from residential sources. Really, close to half of it has been that increase in personal property tax. And I was wondering if you could just briefly explain what types of personal property are subject to this tax, or what are the major sources that we have in the city?
So personal property, our largest tax, single taxpayer in the city is Unitil, and the lion's share of what they pay is in personal property. It's all of the machinery and equipment that's used in the, in the generation of electricity there, what they call a 504 is their tax code. They're at about $180 million in value. Two years ago, they were at $115 million roughly, and the state required us to hire appraisers and go out and change, they changed the formula for how these properties are assessed. But personal property tax itself is, is any company that's subject to it based on how they, they relate to the Department of Revenue and the IRS, whether they're a corporation or an LLC or an LP, they're subject to what they call a personal property tax. And it could be anything from the inventory at a store or a, I mean, not a manufacturer because they are exempt, but it could be any of the equipment and inventory and tools that are used in the conduct of business. So, for instance, a barber shop, it's the chairs, the desks, the mirrors, things like that that are used for them. And the reason we went out and we hired RRC Incorporated is they specialize in this. They have over 200 communities in Massachusetts and 300 communities. They're, they're known throughout the United States, primarily in New England, and they're experts in the field. So as a, for instance, we had a company move into town last year, and they, you know, just sat there under the radar, and they filed their formal list, but there was a little box clicked off on their formal list, which is what they submit every year to tell us what they have for assets. Well, underneath that little box is another little checkbox that they had, and their personal property went from $250,000 to 1.2 million. And it was just because they know which boxes are where to look, they know who to contact, how to get in touch with, you know, the people, the powers that be. A lot of times, the companies that have their, their financial, chief financial officers or their accountants, they don't even know whether or not they're taxable. So it's, it's nice to have a company of this, you know, you know, this, with this ability to come in and assist us in this. And in years past, with having the split tax rate, it was never something that the city in past practice was really pushing for because it, they, in past years, they felt that, you know, the businesses were being penalized by this virtue of having the split tax rate. So it's just.
So you have the enviable position that you get to send Unitil a bill?
Yes.
I'm kinda jealous of that.
And it's a big bill, Counselor.
$3 million bill.
One of the other areas of growth we have is the cannabis industry in the city. We saw that excise taxes have doubled last fiscal year to about $550,000. But we're also seeing a lot of investment in industrial properties that are being used by the cannabis grow facilities. And I saw you have a table in this book, and I think that's really interesting to see the level of investment in these properties and what these properties are generating in property taxes on top of the excise taxes from, from sales of cannabis, and also including the, the personal property taxes for these facilities. So I think that's a great area of growth in our city.
Correct. Since 2016, or eight years ago, when we, the city adopted the cannabis bylaws and welcomed their first grower to, to invest in the city, we've taken in three-point, just under $3.5 million in taxes, in real taxes. This year, we're at 800, just over 810,000. It was a $40,000 increase. And again, we're picking up through RRC a lot of the personal property that, I don't grow cannabis, I don't know what a lot of the machines are. Actually, I'll be the first to admit, I went to one of the places and was like, I can't believe how much stuff you have there. And they're like, that's the stuff we ship out and feed to cows. It was the leaves, and I don't know, you know, the parts of the plant or anything. I think they all look like tomato plants and smell like tomato.
We weren't able to Google all the machinery and what they use and the lights on our computers without warnings of being not allowed on the websites.
Firewall issues, so.
So I just, I think I'm very encouraged by these numbers. I want to thank you and your office for taking the time to do such a good job putting this together, and thank you for all your efforts.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Counselor Squalia?
Continuing on what you were saying about the TIF, the information on Great Wolf, is that reflected in the numbers here? Will these numbers go up? Where is that reflected?
It's reflected in their value, which isn't, it's included in this book, but it's not, it's a separate, it's their personal property record card. Right now, they're at assessed at, I want to say, around $29 million. I believe the terms of the TIF are, it goes up to 75%, I want to say. Right now, it's at 50%. It was at 50% for the first 10 years, I believe. So fiscal year '25, they'll go up to 75%.
So they pay 50% of the 29 million?
No, that's 50% of their value. The building should be assessed at around 60 million or just south of that, 58 million.
Okay, so the 29 million in 2025, we'll see it.
It'll go up to 34 or 35 million.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, when is the last year of the TIF?
Theirs is, it goes out to 34, 2034. I believe it's a 20-year TIF. I don't have it in front of me, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then with that, previous administrations that did the TIF exempted their personal property at 100% for the first 10 years. So we're estimating, again, that's one of the reasons we hired RRC, is they're experts in this. But anything you see in the building, whether it be a set of bunk beds, the soda fountain, the water slides, the pump systems, there's, there's millions of dollars worth of personal property that we can't assess. So they're actually planning on going out next year and setting up a file for, for Great Wolf Lodge so that come 2025, we'll know what they have and we'll know what to expect for, for growth from that side of it as well.
So in 2025, will the personal property go from 100% exempt to 50% exempt?
It'll go to 50%.
And then year.
The same schedule?
Yeah. That one was 100 to 50, and I believe the TIF on the building was, was 100% exempt to 70, 50% exempt to 25% exempt. So we'll pick up, they were done in the inverse. One of them was a full wipe of taxes, the personal property. And the building itself was at a 50% exemption for the first 10 years.
And there, and by 2034-ish, it'll be at a 0%? Or does it never reach 0?
It will be, yeah. At 2034, the TIF goes away, and they're at 100% full fair cash value, so.
Okay. Great.
I had Counselor Genitali for the second time?
Just one more thing I forgot to say about the need for keeping this a single tax rate. There's just something lightning in the Worcester Telegram. During Worcester's meeting last night when they set their rates, Alex Gordiola, who's the Worcester Regional Chamber of Commerce VP of Government Affairs and Public Policy, he stated at their meeting yesterday that we, the chamber, continue to shift, I'm sorry, we, the city of Worcester, this is a direct quote, "The city of Worcester continues to shift the burden onto their, onto our businesses here in Worcester, which has undoubtedly moved businesses out of the city into neighboring communities and must be stopped as soon as possible. The chamber has advocated for Worcester to move toward a single rate for commercial and residential properties over a long period of time. Of the communities bordering Worcester, only Auburn has a dual tax rate. The rest of the communities have a single." So to just further emphasize my earlier points about the chamber's position on the major impacts a dual tax rate community has on its business classes versus a single, and how Worcester is way, way beyond, you know, Worcester's being used as a benchmark because they're like the heart of the county, and everybody around them is practically not doing what they're doing, and they're losing business as a result. But they're in such a deep hole, they, they can't move fast enough without really killing the residents. So we're very fortunate to be in the position we're in now and what we did the last decade, and we need to keep it going. Thank you.
Counselor Rocheman? Second time?
You tell them that on this personal property tax, that every year it depreciates by 10%? That there's no guarantee that next year we'll get the total valuation of $190 million for Unitil?
Well, it's true that, well, no, I can't say that because Unitil was 180 million last year, and they're 180 million this year, and they had 13.4 million in new growth this year because they're always replacing stuff. So what we do is we take, and they provide us the number of what they're investing in the city. In this year, the number was 3.4 million. It was actually closer to 15 million, but what they, they have what they call construction work in progress. So we take that out of next year's because it's in this year, so we're not double taxing them for the same stuff. So they do have some things that depreciate, but some types of personal property depreciate faster than others. And in the instance of utilities, they don't depreciate as fast because they have such a long lifespan that you might have a transformer that has a 25-year lifespan, so you're losing 4% a year on it. But they're also replacing transformers as they go. So it's constantly always, in the instance of Unitil, they're always, you know, refilling the pot, if you will, so as the depreciation comes out. But there are some types of things that depreciate quickly, like computers and things of that sort. They might have a five-year lifespan, so they're depreciating at 20%. But again, someone might be having a computer depreciated to the 20%, but then somebody else is picking up a computer. So there's always, you know, a re, you know, refilling of the well if you, you know, if you, trying to find a good term for it, but it's always replenishing itself, so.
Yeah, I understand your saying. All right. Now, my, my other question, I, I kinda disagree sometime with Mr. Dean, Counselor Dean Natale over there when he talks. Well, I get amazed that when I voted for the single tax rate, I'm not finding fault with it. I have a hard time that I, I thought that I would see a lot of growth coming in because of all the vacant buildings that we have and different other things. But I haven't really seen that much growth. If you talk about growth, I mean, besides the Amazon tearing down Simon, Stone, and Steel and having Amazon coming in. and you have an Amazon coming in, that's, to me, it's not, I don't see that much growth as a person.
So, just to answer that briefly, if you go to page 58 with the marijuana facilities themselves, there isn't a lot of new building, but there's a tremendous amount of investment in the city in things like that. The other thing you have to remember is a building like Harper Furniture or down on Morin Square-
Yeah.
Was a commercial building up until two years ago or last year when it changed use. There's apartments going in that building, so those get reclassified as residential. Even if they're renting them out and you say that's an apartment building, like 1428 Main Street is an apartment building, that's not a commercial use, even though there's some guy or, or some company that's running that as a business. All residential property is classed residential, even if it's for commercial purposes. They tried changing the tax code 1,000 times, and it's, it's classed as such. So, that adds an increase, so there's an investment, but the investment's in the wrong category, if you will. The Amazon facility, them tearing down a, an 80-year-old or a 70-year-old Simon Saw building and putting up the new one, the timing isn't right. They took a $6 million building, but we could only pick up 2 million of it. So, it looks like we lost commercial, but next year, when the building's done, we'll be at or above where it was, and we'll have a building that's not 70 or 80 years old. We'll have a building that's a year old. Game on. It's not really something you see every day or you hear about, maybe you do, but it's a, it's, there was a tremendous amount of investment there. That's probably around $10 million off the top of my head, that it's kind of on the outskirts of the city, so you don't think of it. A lot of the development that we see is redevelopment, though, and it would be, there's still, in the, the growing of marijuana, there's still two facilities. One, we haven't even started taxing or reclassified as such. There's two on, one on Westminster Street, one on River Street. There's a property on Industrial Road. There was going to be what we thought to be another property on Industrial Road, but specialty products purchased at the old Donata Wire, and they're going to use that as one of their facilities. So, it's, it's a success story, if you will, for that. 20 Authority Drive just completed the full buildout of the building. They were at half 50%. So, there's another several million dollars in value for that, plus the personal property on it, so.
Yeah, because I'm only going by what I read in your book, in the book, where you talked about it earlier, where you say we should have a better line versus kind of residential, commercial, and businesses. There should be a lot more, because in residential, you lose money, because you're bringing people with kids, and now that's a burden to your school system, and in actuality, you're losing money when you have it, because it costs, what, $5,000, $6,000 per child to go to the school system?
It's, it's in here what the average tax bill puts towards it in the budget breakdown towards the back. I don't know that number, I, I don't typically get involved in it, but to Counselor Dean Talley's point earlier, and just as a, if you raise the value of the commercial property, then they pay more of a share, but if you raise the tax rate of the commercial property and they leave, the money's still built into the levy, so somebody has to pay it. So, that was, I think, the point he was trying to make, is a lot of the split tax rate communities, the residential properties still end up paying more or getting higher increases, because what happens when Amazon doesn't go to Pittsburgh, and they pick Lemonster, for instance? And the other point I want to make is, most of the split tax rate communities that I looked at today, there's 110 of them, they primarily have some sort of an access issue, or it's a location issue. So, if they're on Marlboro, right on 495 and 290, Air, most of Air's, Industrial is on rail line, they have large facilities that come off the, they also have a taxable hospital, which is their largest taxpayer, I believe, the Neshoba Valley Medical Center. Auburn at the Mass, the intersection of the Mass Pike and 3, and 290, 395, or 290, or somewhere out there. So, they're all, their locations, and, and most of them, for the most part, are places that had either one historic, Pittsfield had General Electric. So, it was easy for them to shift it, because they had one big taxpayer who they knew wasn't going to get up and leave. It may have made sense in Pittsburgh, when GE was here and they were booming, and all the paper mills were up and running, but it doesn't make sense to, in, in my opinion, and it's strictly my opinion, it's not an advisory, but it doesn't make sense to push for that, because you're going to ultimately end up penalizing the residential properties more.
And to elaborate on your point, you were referring to the growth on page 29, about how if we have more growth, then that's more on the residents and paying for schools. But this isn't, page 29 isn't about Pittsburgh, it's about, in general, how growth works, and that's talking about you want a balance of growth. He explained everything to do with how much commercial we have going on, on top of the 30 new construction houses that we had for residential, and that's just the new construction on top of the people that added additions, added finished basements, added bathrooms, added, so it's just overall saying that you want a good balance of it, because if it is unbalanced, that's when you run into, if residents are paying for more, and that's more people in schools. But where we stand right now, based on everything we have, we are in a good balance, and when he, when we, when we estimate how much growth we're going to have for each budget, we base it on all these factors, and we are in a pretty balanced growth between commercial and residential as we stand right now.
But my question is, the growth, vast majority of your growth came from the sale of homes and the evaluation of homes. Your, your evaluation of a home went from 250,000 to 300,000 and higher. So, you still get the same homes, it's just the evaluation-
That's not growth, counselor. That's, that's not growth, counselor, that's just the reassessment of the property based on the market.
A new house is growth.
Right, okay, I'm sorry about that.
If the market says that a house is worth 200 to 250, that's not growth. We can't pick that up as growth. Growth is strictly what's new. You have to add on addition, you have to build a new house, you have to tear out a structure in a commercial building and rebuild it into something, it's something that wasn't there before.
What's not growth, and I think that you're, you're confusing the terms, is the increase in the assessed value went up nearly $500 million. Of that, 460 million, 92% of that was residential increase.
Right.
So, you're looking at 92% of the increase being residential, from the 17 to 20% increase based on market adjustments. The tax bill is going up for the single fam, average single family 6%.
Let me ask one final question, then I'll yield the floor. On this-
I'll hold you to that.
I will, all right. No, my question is, do you think, as an assessor, we're hurting people from investing in their own property, because all of a sudden, we're turning around and saying, "You got new growth, now we want to tax you for this new growth." Do you understand what my question is on that?
Are you stopping people from building an addition to their house?
Yeah, dad, or fixing my bathroom, or fixing my kitchen.
Not in Pittsburgh, we're not. You know, people want to compare us to other communities, and I worked in one of them, and their split right now is 80/20. It's been that historically. They've always had a single tax rate, and their average residential tax bill for a single-family home's $1,100 to $1,200 more than it is here. People are going to invest in their properties, especially in the last couple of years. That's why we've seen such an increase. People were putting in the kitchens and putting in the bathrooms, and the banks were giving away money, and the interest rate was 2.8% or 2.7%. So, people were buying houses that they couldn't afford, but they could on paper, because they were, you know, giving you a $400,000 mortgage with no money down, and you were paying, you know, $1,500 a month, including taxes in Pittsburgh. And now that's, you know, with them in, increasing the interest rates, you're starting to see that people are backing off, they're starting to, the people with actual money are the ones that are looking, and they're going to be a little more careful about what they buy. So, that's why we're seeing the market slow. But it's, people aren't not fixing up their homes because of the tax, the taxes in Pittsburgh.
All right. I yield the floor.
See some, where some of these new constructions are being built, where they're selling $400,000 new constructions in parts of this city? It's pretty crazy.
Only call it crazy, go down the home, people buy a two-by-four, it costs you $6.
Yielded the floor.
My fault, that was my fault.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to expound on the, the benefits of encouraging growth versus the, the split tax rate, in terms of the, the real benefit and the money that we generate. And I think you can look at One Elk Hill Road, which is owned by Revolution High Growers, which is a cannabis facility, but it, before they made that investment, it was a largely vacant mill building, the old Anvil Shoe Factory. You could walk in, there was some, many different efforts to redevelop the property, nothing happened. It was largely vacant, it's a huge property. And in 2017, an assessment of just a little over $3 million and generated about $83,000 in, in property taxes. And then, Revolution High Growers went in, they looked at the property, they developed a cannabis field, they invested vast sums of money to, to, into that building, and the assessment went up to, to over $11 million. And the, the property taxes went up to 181 million, 181,000, so $100,000 more. And during this time, the property tax rate for this property dropped from $26 to $16. So, the, the property tax rate dropped $10, and the amount of money generated by this property increased to $100,000. That's the benefit of investment, and that's the benefit that we have, having a single tax rate to encourage this investment. And it gets even better than that, because you look at the, the personal property taxes, another $37,000 on top of that. So, these are real projects that we can encourage in, in our city, and it's not just cannabis, it's, on a smaller scale, other investments in our city that have a real return, much, much greater than it would be to shift the tax rate.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Counselor-
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, I won't double down what's already been said, but I'm for the single tax rate still, and I just want to preach patience, because it's, it's relatively new that we made this switch, and I think we need to take the time to determine if, what predictions, like Counselor Dean Talley and Van Hazen Kev mentioned, you know, will this work long-term and eventually ease the burden of, of our residents by splitting up more of the pie? And I think we've got other things down the line. I know in my ward at the airport, we've got good plans for development there, and I want to see that encouraged by the single tax rate, and encourage the growth there at the airport and throughout Ward 6. That's all I've got. Thank you, I yield the floor.
Thank you very much. I have one more brief remark myself, I suppose two technically. First, I just wanted to zero in on something you had said about the other communities with split tax rates. Am I correct in summarizing what you were saying, as the communities that have a split tax rate and make it work for them are communities that essentially have a, one or more captive businesses? Businesses that don't have an option to pick up and move or-
In some instances, you, you have that, but in a lot of instances, it's just location. It's a reason why they're there. It's, it's the rail line that used to come from Lemonster to Worcester that had foster grants on it, and then came this way and fed the, you know, the Weber-Lundberg property and came through town that way. So, there were multiple, you know, instances for the rail, or it's, it's off of 495, it's off of 128.
So, either the business doesn't have anywhere to go, or there's something about the community that makes it uniquely ideal and offset.
That makes them want to pay a premium to be there.
Exactly. And I think neither of those is true of Pittsburgh. I mean, the latter, in a sense, I mean, certainly I would like to think that there's plenty that would draw people to want to pay a premium to live in Pittsburgh, but it's not like access to, you know-
But coupled with, coupled with a single tax rate that makes it more enticing are the amenities that Pittsburgh has to offer. The airport is big, we're starting to, you're starting to hear more jets take off from there. You can hear them when they come over City Hall. That never happened before. It might have been once every six months, I'd hear a jet.
I remember.
I live in a community, you know, 10 miles from here, and I hear jets all the time, and they're too loud to be going to Hanscom. So, you can tell that they're coming or they're going from Pittsburgh, and that's a tremendous asset, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, the other thing that you said that I found very interesting, on the subject of those, essentially what we might call commercially operated residential properties. So, they're classed as residential, but for all intents and purposes, they're businesses, except tax classification. I just want to highlight for people that that means, if I'm understanding correctly, that even some of the residential growth still benefits the actual homeowners and residents of Pittsburgh by cutting down their bill, because if that 80% residential is made up of a larger share of these commercial apartment buildings, then that's less of that share that's being paid by the single-family homeowner, the two-family homeowner, even the three-family homeowner, and more that's being paid by these investors who are coming in and building apartment complexes. And, don't get me wrong, I'm not, you know, I am not intending to say anything at all disparaging about those investors, quite the opposite. I'm glad they're coming, and I'm glad to have them here, I'm glad they're putting their faith in Pittsburgh. My point is simply that when we think about the burden on homeowners, not 100% of that 80% residential is actually homeowners. And I think it's important to remember that when we think about what growth we're seeing in the city, because I think we are seeing some really great commercial growth, but we're also seeing a lot of residential development that is on the financial side of the game, regardless of whether it's taxed as residential or not. Everything's, I, I honestly think everything's looking up. I think that we're going to continue to see these numbers improve over the next several years. Will we ever actually see a year-over-year decrease in property tax bills? I don't know, probably not unless the market crashes. But as long as we keep the increases small and stable, I think we're going to foster a much, much more enticing residential community, as well as our efforts to attract the business That said, are there any final questions or comments, or do I have a motion to set a shift at a-
A motion.
At what percentage?
100%.
100% shift, so, so no shift, just to be clear for everyone listening in. I have a motion and second. I'm going to ask that we take this by roll call, please. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Squalia?
Hi.
Counselor Ben Hasinga?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Dean Talley?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
And that's it. So, we have eight members in favor.
Excellent. That passes unanimously, and- But adjourn. Just a moment, we are in public hearing. Actually, I did that out of order, my apologies. I need to ask if there are any members of the public wishing to speak for or against. There's no one here, for the record. If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed, and now could we renew that motion, please? I'm sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
So, this is a motion for the shift again, just to do it in the right procedural order. Since we've already taken the roll call vote, I'm just going to say, if there's no objection, unanimous consent, no objection, passes unanimously. Now, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn.
Aye.
There being no objection, we are adjourned.